All right. Good morning. We have a nice, good-looking group of people here today with smiles on their faces. And welcome to our weekly board session for Marion County Commissioners. It's Wednesday, May 23rd. We're here in the Senator Hearing Room at 555 Court Street Northeast. And as always, our tradition, when we start our board meetings, please join us with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Normally, we say, we have public comment, and
Nobody's here.
Noni has signed up. Today, we have a whole list of people that have signed up. And if you haven't signed up, Kristy, do we have another sheet? Because this one's full. Just to make sure, if you haven't signed up and you want to make public comment, please sign up. I just want to let everybody know that typically, we limit public comment to three minutes per person. If you want to come up in a group, we will give one person in that group 10 minutes to speak for the group. And we're not real strict about that, but since we have a full group of people today, we're going to try to stay on that. So if you could respect that and respect the others that want to have some time, that would be much appreciated. So we'll just go down the list today of about 15 people that are signed up. And the first individual that signed up is Jeff Hain. And for the record, if you would come over to this side and please introduce yourself, your address, your name, and we'll go from there. Welcome.
Good morning, Marion County Commissioner and members of Marion County. My name is Jeff Hain, just for the record.
I'm going to butcher a lot of them today.
You've got to be able to read them. It looks like they're here.
Yes. I live at 306031st Avenue in Salem, a resident of Marion County. I also am here in the capacity today of the Chairman of the Marion County Republican Party. And to that, I am here representing a group of people who would like nothing more than for the county to follow the Oregon Constitution and the U.S. Constitution where the Second Amendment is stated, as well as, I believe in its Article One, Section 27 of the Oregon Constitution. I'm not going to speak long. I have a resolution that was adopted by Marion County Republicans who represent 54,000-some-odd Republicans in the state or in the county of Marion. Maybe not all of them like what this is about, but I believe firmly the majority of them do. And so, to that, again, I'm not going to speak long, but everyone on this board took an oath to uphold and support the Constitution of the United States and that of the state of Oregon. And it is obvious to most that the freedoms that we guard there are under attack by a lot of well-meaning people that have wanted to enact very unwarranted laws. And so what we are asking simply is that you enact an ordinance that says you will follow the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the state of Oregon and not enforce laws against the Second Amendment and Article One, Section 27, where it's about firearms and protection and other things. That's really all that I have to say to you guys today. I hope you'll take it. We have a number of people who have signed this. I will give you this packet that includes the letter signed by me and endorsed by the county party, as well as the people who have signed this. Many people might want to come testify individually to you, but I would like you to know there's a number of folks in the room that are here in support of this. If you would, wave your hands so we know you're here. And with that, I will submit you my packet and allow the meeting to carry on. Thank you.
Thank you. Alan Barker.
Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to present this today. I am the Lead for Marion County Second Amendment Preservation Ordinance for Marion County. I am one of about 30 people in this state who are currently asking their commissioners to step up and to pass this as an ordinance and to reconfirm Oregon state law and United States Constitution. We're not about arguing about whether the finer points that are in the current news regarding any of the incidents that have happened over the last umpteen years with terrorism and individuals with firearms. We're well aware of the fact that there are many people right now trying to make a point to limit our Second Amendment rights. And to this end is the reason for the Second Amendment Preservation Ordinance. FBI has come out with a report just recently where, out of the last two years, we had a string of high-profile firearms incidents, that almost 20% of those incidences were stopped by an individual who had the right of the Second Amendment. The FBI has stated in their report that the individuals who stopped the incidences almost 20% of the time in the last three years probably saved multiple lives by acting as they did. We also know by the FBI report that there could be as many as a half a million per year incidences where firearms have been used but never fired, maybe brandished, maybe displayed, but never fired. And those incidences, we find out, were never reported on the police reports. So at this point in time, what we're trying to say is that when it takes law officers, usually a minimum of three or four minutes, if we're lucky, to respond to an incident, any citizen has a right to carry and a Second Amendment right to carry a firearm can be instrumental in saving lives. And the FBI reports and other data has shown that. So again, we're asking that the Commissioners take this up on their agenda, report back to us as to what their status is as it progresses, and we'll be here to support it the whole way. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Alan. Is it Ted Morrison?
Good morning. I'm Ted Morrison. I'm with these fine people over here representing
Sorry.
Excuse me. Second Amendment Protection Ordinance for Marion County. I don't think that I could say anything any better than what these gentlemen have said. They've put it very well. I've jumped on board with this cause here. The Second Amendment was enacted for very good reasons. Self-preservation. Self-preservation. Protection of ourselves, protection of our families, protection of our country. Protection of our country. There have been absolutely horrible instances that have happened as of recently that have been in the news, absolutely. I mean, you can't turn on the news without seeing something about some of the things that have been going on. However, there's an element there when we're talking about laws that could potentially be against the Second Amendment, and that element is the criminal element. The people who are going to follow these laws are going to be law-abiding citizens. That's it. They're going to be law-abiding citizens. The criminal element is still going to have access to these firearms. And, you know, the people that have, that would decide to follow the law would then potentially be unarmed, unable to protect themselves. As was stated before, the police, yeah, two, three, eight minutes, up to eight minutes for somebody to come and accommodate the situation. That's way too long. I think there are other ways that these horrifying actions could be thwarted, but not through going against the Second Amendment of the United States. So yes, I would ask you to take this into consideration, and I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Make sure I start my timer over so it doesn't go off on the next speaker. Our next person that's signed up is, is it Davis Dyer? Did I get the last name right?
Commissioners, my name is Davis Dyer. I reside in Kaiser at 4888 Seagate Way North. Unlike some of these others who have already spoken, I do not carry a firearm. I do not own a firearm, yet I am quite supportive of this ordinance, simply if for no other reason than on principle. I believe it is the responsibility of all law enforcement and law-making individuals to support the constitutions of the state of Oregon and the United States. And insofar as the Second Amendment goes, any law that would infringe upon or abridge that right for law-abiding citizens should be not enforceable. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Commissioner Cameron and Commissioner Brentano, everyone who is here today. My name is Barry Shapiro. I'm from Silverton. And I just want to start by saying it's amazing how many experts we have here on constitutional rights. I just learned something. I didn't know the Second Amendment was about self-preservation. That's fascinating. So far this year, in 2018, there have been 22,390 incidents of gun violence in this country. 5,535 people have been killed. 10,115 people injured. 240 children under the age of 11 have been killed or injured. 1,005 teenagers have been killed or injured. There have been 654 unintentional shootings, 103 mass shootings. On an average day, 96 Americans are killed with guns. There are approximately 310 guns in the United States, one for every man, woman, and child in America. But only about one-third or so of Americans actually own the guns. Every year, there are about 63 gun-related homicides, 378 gun-related suicides, 160 non-fatal shootings, and 138 unintentional shootings in Oregon. Sunday Statesman Journal reported gun violence costs a state $2.6 billion a year. Passing this Second Amendment Preservation Ordinance will cost the state more, not less. More money and more lives. Now, in terms of the ordinance itself, one of the things it mentions, Part A, Number One, "to keep and bear arms as originally understood." Originally understood means muskets. Part Two of the same A, "freely manufacture, transfer, sell, and buy firearms." This is counter to prevailing laws and federal laws, state laws. What this ordinance will do is compel, it's illegal. Let's begin with that. It is illegal, and it is unenforceable. The idea of sheriffs dictating policy, I don't know if we're going back to John Wayne movies, but the recommendations in this ordinance would not hold up in court, and it would end up being referred to by the state laws, which we need to honor. Part D of the Second Amendment Preservation Ordinance openly advocates violating state and federal law regarding registration, background checks, possession, and use. Specifically, it resolves to defy any background check requirements passed prior to 2012. It is in violation of Oregon State Law 166.10. This also violates the federal universal background checks, as lax as that system is.
Barry, can you just wrap it up, please?
I'm going to wrap it up.
Thank you.
Part E stipulates that the county sheriff will have the authority to overrule local, state, and federal laws as a matter of internal policy. It cites O.R.S. 203.035, which does not back up this resolution. "The governing body of the electors of a county may be ordinance exercise authority within the county over matters of county concern to the fullest extent allowed by the Constitution."
Please finish up. Thank you very much for your testimony. Appreciate it. Thank you. Lee?
Marion County Commissioners, my name is Lee Mercer. I'm a resident of Silverton.
Welcome.
And I'm the President of Healthcare for All Oregon Action, a statewide healthcare advocacy organization. We have about 30,000 supporters around the state and about 1,400 here in Marion County. With all due respect to our friends and neighbors that are trying to protect the Constitution and the Second Amendment, which, the Constitution which we all respect and love, Healthcare for All Oregon would like to submit to the Commissioners a policy paper on needing to treating and treat gun violence as a public health issue in this country, as Mr. Shapiro outlined. We will turn this paper over to you, but we'd encourage the Commissioners in considering a Second Amendment ordinance to consider their responsibility as the public entity entrusted with public health management in Marion County. I wonder if supporting the efforts to block efforts to common sense gun policies by passing a Second Amendment ordinance wouldn't be in direct conflict with your responsibilities as guardians of public health in Marion County. I would recommend that, as much as we all respect the Constitution, this measure would not be helpful in supporting public health in Marion County. Thanks.
Thank you, Lee. Lori Chadwick.
Thank you for having me here today. I'm Lori Chadwick. I live in Silverton, Oregon, and I expect you to uphold the Constitution and protect the Second Amendment. But the amendment that they are proposing, they don't want background checks on every gun sold. And I don't see how having background checks on every gun sold would diminish the Second Amendment. Also raising the minimum age to purchase a gun, extending the waiting period, these don't take away from their Second Amendment rights. We already restrict access to firearms. We prohibit people from owning machine guns, shoulder-launched missiles, hand grenades. I don't think I'm asking for anything that takes away their rights. We have kids here from our high school that are worried about shootings in schools. I don't think, I don't think we've done everything we can to help them. So I hope you turn down their request. Thank you.
Thank you, Lori. Patrick, I think you're here on another topic, but you're next on the list.
I understand. If I can reserve a minute when that comes up.
You want to defer until this discussion's over?
Yes.
Okay. We'll come back to you. Shalishwan. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good to see you here.
Good to be here.
Welcome.
Thank you. So, good morning. My name is Shalishwan Cryer. I am a Salem resident, and I'm here this morning to speak in opposition of the proposed ordinance. Very simply, passage of such an ordinance is reckless and irresponsible, and it sends the message that Marion County is unwilling to address gun safety issues in a thoughtful and irresponsible manner.
Thank you.
Thank you.
See you down the road.
All along the road.
Yeah. That's great. I can't read this. Is it Orion White? Or, huh? Well, you can introduce yourself, and then I'll get it the right pronunciation. For the record, just introduce your name and where you live.
My name is Orion White. I live at 11424 Hazel Green Road Northeast. I'm a resident of Silverton, and I am one of the students at the school who is concerned and one of the students nationally who advocate for a more responsible level of gun protocol. Dear Commissioners, it is shameful that Marion County's conservatives' first response to the shooting in Santa Fe, Texas, is to rush to protect their guns over the lives of their children. The inaction, misdirection, and obstruction represented by this letter and this proposal are both ridiculous and selfish. In a time when our country needs to unite against violence, the conservatives of our community are creating a wedge between us all. I am a gun owner. I support the Second Amendment, and I support keeping the rights of our citizens free. But I believe that as over time, our guns change in the amount of power they possess, I believe that it is important that this county and this nation uphold our responsibility of creating a more safe environment for us to use those guns. And if that means creating more responsible gun laws for everyone who lives in this county and in this nation, then I support the county's ability to do so, and I do not support this bill that's being here today. Thank you.
Orion, I want to say something. I want to thank you as a high school student for coming out and saying what's on your mind. We need more youth like you to come up and testify on any issue, not just this issue in the future. So stay involved and really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here today. Now, this one I really cannot read. It got small down below.
Cooper Hammond.
Cooper. I've got an English lab named Cooper.
That's not.
It's a great name.
Thank you. Thank you. I like it.
I'm Cooper Hammond. I'm a resident of Silverton at 220 Ames Court. I'm a student at Silverton High School. I participated in the walkout a month ago. This is regarding the Second Amendment Preservation Ordinance. I think that the immediate response from the Marion County Republican Central Committee from shootings around the nation is to move to protect guns rather than children in Oregon is disgraceful. Was it not just last week that students were arrested in Lebanon for bringing a loaded gun to school? This year, there's been an average of one school shooting per week, with more students dying in school shootings than in the U.S. than in our armed forces in 2018. In this year, it's now more dangerous to send students to school than to war. The misdirection and obstruction presented through this bill does nothing but further the danger presented in the past year. A Second Amendment Preservation Ordinance would place the value of guns and misinterpretation of the Second Amendment over the lives of students in Oregon. Thank you. My name is Cooper Hammond.
Cooper, I'm going to just repeat what I said to Orion. Just thank you for standing up and being brave to come in and share what's on your mind and testify.
Thank you, sir.
It's important.
Is it Elijah?
Welcome, Elijah.
Thank you very much. My name is Elijah Raka Shegatov. I'm a resident of Silverton, Oregon, at 325 Telecom Drive. I'm the founder and co-director of Students for Progress, Advocism, and Change, of which we have a large group of our members back there. And we are all here to stand in opposition of this Second Amendment ordinance. Now, I could talk to you about why I believe that gun control is necessary. I could talk to you about the thousands of people killed every year in this country and hundreds of thousands affected by gun violence in this country, and how gun control can actively manage that and actively reduce that. And I could talk to you about the fear that we face on a daily basis going to school, where, as my friend Cooper just pointed out, it is now more dangerous to be going to an American school to be sent into the armed forces, at least in this year. But instead, I'm going to expand on what Mary and Shalishwan talked to you about, how this is a reckless and illegal measure. I'm going to read to you a little bit about the ordinance or from the ordinance that they want you to pass. "The county government shall not authorize or appropriate government funds, resources, employees, agencies, contractors, buildings, detention centers, or offices for the purpose of enforcing any element of such acts, laws, orders, mandates, rules, or regulations that infringe on the right of the people to keep and bear arms, including but not limited to the following: registration requirements; prohibitions and regulations regarding the restriction of use or ownership of non-fully automatic firearms, including but not limited to semi-automatic firearms; and firearms that have a similar to fully automatic firearms and/or military assault-style firearms; C prohibition regulations and restrictions limiting hand grips, stock, flash pressures, bayonet mounts, magazine capacity, clip capacity, internal capacity, other types of ammunition available for sale, possession, or use; and this restricts background checks, as well as, most importantly, restricting prohibiting the possession to carry or transport of lawfully acquired firearms or ammunition by law-abiding adult citizens or minors supervised by adults. This makes so that none of those restrictions can occur regardless of what our state senate and our state legislator passes to have happen. What this can end up meaning is that this lawfully allows for adults to be carrying guns into our schools. It does not allow for the citizens to have any say over what kinds of restrictions happen with our guns. You do not need to have a 16, a 30, a 36, or a 40-round clip to be able to go hunting or to be able to defend your property. And any restriction like that, that if the people in Oregon, if the people in Marion County happen to think is necessary, this would make so we would claim to not enforce. This would not end up going through. This would be illegal, and it would be reckless, and by the end of it, we would end up having to abide the laws. What it would end up doing is wasting taxpayer money. So I find it very ironic and very saddening that my friends from the other side of the aisle, who seem to be so often touting about fiscal responsibility, are now here proposing something to you that has no possible way of being implemented, which is not following the letter of the law and which would be destroying our fiscal responsibility. So I urge of you to not pass this, and I'd like to let you know that if it goes forward, our group is going to be attending future meetings to be protesting this because it makes us not feel safe. Thank you."
Thank you again for being here. Looks like we have Maya. Anybody else here that wanted to testify, sign up, please? Otherwise, Maya will be the last on this issue, and then we'll go to Patrick.
I'm Maya Kuzman.
Welcome.
A resident of Silverton. I live at 1126 Madison Street, and I am a student of Silverton High School. I'm going to also be representing Jason Orr, who is not here today because he is sick with strep throat and did not want to infect all of you guys. So first of all, I'm
Thank you.
To be starting with Jason Orr's statement, which he sent in this morning, and this is what he's saying. "In Texas last Friday, 10 human beings were slaughtered in their place of learning. Before that, 17 human beings were massacred at Marjory Stoneman Douglas High in Parkland, Florida." in Parkland, Florida. All of this is painfully tragic, needless loss of life because some psychopaths were able to get their hands on a gun. So while the Constitution protects a well-regulated militia, it does not allow you, or anyone, the right to risk lives of myself, my friends, my family, and all the people that I love because you cannot stand to prevent psychopaths from getting their hands on firearms. You do, however, have the power to protect children and kids like me and my friends from a fate that, like those multitudes of human beings since Columbine. Use your common sense and protect us and our right to live by adopting policies that will make it harder for unstable individuals to get guns, not easier. I hope that you all do the right thing." And now for myself. First of all, the second, the Second Amendment was written in the 1700s. Guns were very different then. They were much simpler, and they cannot do the mass shootings that we have now. It's, and amendments aren't always there. They're subject to change. In fact, the Eighteenth Amendment was repealed by the Twenty-first in 1933. This was the prohibition on alcohol. But it was changed because we decided to make that change. This bill would propose to not allow this change to happen if it is found to be needed. This doesn't allow us to progress and to make change, like what we stand for. Also, 117 deaths were found last year in mass shootings, and 587 people were injured. Schools push the idea that it's going to be a safe place for people to go to, and that it's the place that you can go to, to not, to be able to learn, not to be scared of dying. And it isn't anymore with all these school shootings happening. I can't feel safe in my school anymore, which is a place that I'm supposed to go to learn, to be with my friends, to be with teachers, and to get an education. And I can't do this anymore. Also, in 2013, 33,636 deaths were due to injury by firearms, and this has risen since drastically. It's not changing because we aren't allowing for this change to happen, and we need to allow this change to happen, which this bill would not allow. So I urge all of you guys to not allow this bill. Thank you.
Thanks, Maya. Thank you for coming here today and testifying. Okay, anybody else want to share on that particular issue? Did you, Marty? Go ahead, just introduce yourself then, if you're the only person in. And Kristi, you can just add her name to the list.
Well, my name is Marty Hyon. I live on 31st Avenue in Salem. I wasn't planning to talk today, but I did hear some misconceptions, and I want to make sure everybody understands. Of course, personally, I am not against background checks because we want to make sure felons don't get guns. But what I very strongly against is like IP-44, where they're taking away pretty much every, every type of firearm there is. So not only is there a Second Amendment right, but there's also an Oregon Constitution right. Article One, Section 27 says I have a right to have a firearm for my protection. Also, on IP-43, every firearm that they've listed, pretty much only left two types of firearms that you could have. One is a shotgun, and one is a revolver. And in that abhorrent shooting in Texas, he used a shotgun and a revolver. A gun is a tool. It's your heart that's important. There's been, something's going on in this society. We've had guns for hundreds of years, and it's been in the last 30 years that this has gone on. There's something deeper going on, and taking guns from law-abiding people that would risk their life to save you is not the answer.
Thank you, Marty. Before we have Patrick.
Probably. There's one more.
Huh? Sure. Come on up, but just introduce yourself for the record, and Kristi will add your name to the list. Welcome.
Welcome, thank you. I'm Mary Ann Byrne, and I live here in Salem on Park, Park Avenue. I didn't see the piece of paper over there, so I couldn't put my name on it.
It's on there now for you, Mary Ann.
Okay, thank you. And it's spelled B-E-I-R-N-E. Now, when I, I'm here to oppose the, this proposed ordinance that is being presented here today. In light of, I find it rather curious that so many people who have been protesting for years that there's too much government are here wanting to make more government. And also who are against spending money are proposing something that will cost more money to enforce and carry out and make more paperwork. As a biologist, I, I also want to speak up not just for the people who died, but for the people who were wounded. When I read the essay about, from the emergency room doctors of what they went through trying to save people's lives because of the damage done by the kind of bullets that were used in Parkland, I would like to be able to have the ability to limit the use of those kinds of bullets so that emergency room doctors don't have to go looking for specialty people to treat people in any emergency room in this country because they don't know how to deal with that kind of damage that's done by those, those twirling bu, bullets that rip up the inside of the body and how to, and keep people from bleeding to death. So besides the fact that, you know, most of us think of guns as, as a projectile that hits and goes, either lands or goes through, the idea that we now have weapons that can cause this kind of massive damage to the victim, we don't give enough attention to the victims of all this violence. The other is, I'm thinking, why are people so afraid? Why is everyone so defensive? I think we are surrounded with a lot of fake news, and all we see is, is all the stuff about guns and violence. I was one of the organizers of the March for Science here in Salem. Two weeks before our March for Science, a national group organized to have a rally on, on the same place that we had permits to have a rally in favor of guns. What happened is we had numbers of people contact us telling us that they weren't going to come and bring their children to the March for Science because all these people were going to show up with guns. The Statesman Journal covered the rally with the gun people. The Statesman Journal said nothing about the March for Science. I had people coming up to me, asking me, "Well, did it, did you, did you not have a March for Science?" I said, "Yeah, we did," and we marched through town, as well as had wonderful science exhibits for the public to see, and the, and the high school kids in Salem put on their, showed their experiments and the things that they were doing. But the Statesman Journal didn't cover it. So what I'm asking is, where is your source of information coming from? And if you're listening to fake news that's only telling you about shootings and scaring you and making you more and more frightened and unable to maintain your freedom, then you need to take a look at what's happening to your mind. Thank you. Oh, and 20%. As a teacher, if you got 20% on a test, you didn't pass.
I've done that before. Thank you very much. Probably lower than 20% whatsoever.
Pardon me. Chair Cameron, if I could.
Yes, sir.
Oh, sure.
One more? Sure. Introduce yourself for the record, please.
Now, does she get the group rate?
Right. You get to talk 10 minutes because you're speaking for a group. No. I don't know if you were here, but we are trying to limit testimony to three minutes.
No problem. So my name is Jessica Davidson. I'm a Marion County resident from Kaiser. I just want to say that I am for this ordinance that is brought before you guys today. And my daughter is as well, apparently. There have been men and women who have served our country to help us fight for our right to bear arms, and I apologize.
What's your daughter's, what's your daughter's name?
Her name is Shaylee.
Hi, Shaylee.
Were you hoping it was Cooper? That's where you were going?
No.
So, our family is very passionate about having, having our firearms in our home to protect, protect our family. And of course, our neighbors as well, because not everybody is as comfortable at using their firearms. Both my husband and I are trained. We've both taken our concealed carry classes and obtained our license to, to be able to carry. And we feel that it's very important to also uphold the Constitution. We have a constitutional right to bear arms, and I hope that you guys will consider that there are young families, me especially, being a stay-at-home mom. I'm home all day by myself with my little ones, and I should be able to protect them with my firearms. I appreciate you guys, you know, taking, taking a look at this and really reading in depth what it means and what we are standing for when we bring this before you, and know that the Marion County Central Committee meeting is 100% behind this. We endorse this for you guys. I'm a delegate to the state as well, and I can tell you that a lot of the people within that party are going to, to back this. So I hope that you guys will consider it with your, your minds and your hearts and know that there's good intentions behind it. So, that's all I have to say.
Jessica, thank you, and Shaylee. Is it Shaylee?
Yes.
Shaylee, thank you for your testimony as well. Okay, anybody else? Going once? Twice? All right? Commissioner?
Well, I've been interrupted three or four times, rightly so, and maybe it'd been better to leave it that way. Just some thoughts. This isn't a public hearing. It isn't an agenda item. Normally, we don't discuss or something that's come up, at least at that time, be it a further date. But if you'll bear with me or allow me to, just some personal thoughts, just because there's a group here, and I'd like them to know how I think. But it's a, it's a bad spot to be in because I'm opposed to all of them. And I'll tell you what that is. I don't support the ordinance. I've read it over pretty firmly. The sheriff's powers don't rhyme. The enforceability doesn't rhyme. And background checks are mentioned, but you should also know about me. I also have a concealed weapons permit. I'm avid hunter and shooter, and I believe in the Second Amendment. What Marion County did, I'll have it here, March 2015 was passed a resolution. I don't know if you're familiar with it. It basically says what the proponents of this ordinance like, and I'll just go through it real quickly. Marion County resolves, there's three items. It strongly affirms our commitments to rights and liberties enshrined within the Constitution, including right to keep and bear arms, opposes any state or federal law that abridges or is contrary to the Constitution of the United States or the State of Oregon in preserving people's right to bear arms, and Marion County strongly supports the right of people to keep and bear arms, a state in the Constitution as interpreted by the United States Supreme Court and the Oregon Supreme Court, and vigorously opposes any state, federal law that unconstitutionally restricts these rights. If it was up to me, I would add one, and it'd be something along the lines that we prohibit the use of Marion County resource, resources to confiscate firearms in violation of the Second Amendment. So, it isn't an agenda item. We're not going to make a decision. We will have a point in the future that we'll get out to the public when we decide which way we want to go. So there's a couple of options. Want to approve, don't approve, stick with the resolution, or add to it, and that'll be a further discussion at a later date.
You want to?
Oh, excuse me.
So what was the date on that resolution?
March 15th, 2018, and for those that are
Fifteen, wasn't it?
2015, excuse me. I had a few copies, I think there's four or five copies of the resolution available if somebody wants to take a look at that. So that's my thoughts.
So, appreciate everybody's public comment. We have one more person signed up for public comment, and we would invite you all to stay away, around after Mr. Vance does his public com, comment for the hot topics on our agenda. We, we love to have an audience, you know, to, to give us, give us smiles as we go through our action items and our consent calendar.
What is that hot topic? OLCC applications?
Well, there's one on the sheriff's off, there's three on the sheriff's office. There's OLCC applications, and we got a health action item and a public works
All right, all right. More than I thought.
Right. So, Patrick, you want to come up and, you've got a guest with you. Just introduce yourself for the record, please. Thank you very much. And I want to thank everybody who, if you do leave, thank you very much for participating in this really important process.
Morning, Mr. Chair. Commissioners, my name is Patrick Vance, and I live in McClay. I am the chair of your Health Advisory Board, and I'm, on your agenda today is an order appointing Kristen Barber to our board. I just want to comment very positively about that appointment and about how pleased we are that Kristen stepped forward to, to join us. She was recent, she recently joined Northwest Human Services, Paul Logan's organization, excuse me. And Paul Logan is a great recruiter and a great leader, and we're glad to have her and him as part of the resources available to serve Marion County residents. And so I would thank you for considering that appointment. And this is Kristen.
Welcome, Kristen. It was great to meet you at our last advice, Health Advisory Board meeting. And Patrick, I just want to say thank you for your service to all the things you do, volunteering in Marion County, all the chairs, everything. I'll see you soon, really.
Yes, sir, a couple of weeks. Thank you very much. It's, it's a pleasure to do that. I think it's something to do, and it's a, I like it.
And, and Kristen, you can either, if you want to share now, and then Carrie's going to come up under the official action item, and you go ahead and share now if you would like to, and you can come up again if you want.
Is this on?
Carrie, what'd you like?
You want me to wait? Okay. Again, my name is Kristen Kens Barber. I was fortunate enough to get to know Patrick, who felt, invited me to attend one of the Marion County Health Advisory Board meetings, and I am very passionate about health in our community. Public health is relatively new to me. I have mostly a hospital background. But working for a federally qualified health center, I have really learned a great deal about social determinants of health and the impact of mental health, physical health, housing, how it all plays together, and some of the things, it's, it's like one of the, the ladies spoke earlier, there's something going on in this country that needs to change. And I think a lot of that is rooted in mental health, alcohol, chemical addictions, everything that plays into health. And if there's anything that I can do from a consumer and a provider point of view in working with severely underserved folks in our community, I, I want to be able to put that out there for the county when it comes to decision-making.
Thank, thank you. Thanks for stepping up and volunteering to serve on that important board.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, nobody else signed up for public comment? We will move right into our official business of the day. And I'll take a motion on the consent calendar, if you want to.
I just lost it. Let me get it back. I'll do it off the paper. Chair Cameron, I make a motion to approve our consent calendar this morning. On it or in it, under Board of Commissioners, OLCC applications with recommended approval, Abacoa Spirits Distillery LLC in Silverton, and RJAM Hoy LLC DBA Geppetto's Italian Restaurant in Salem. Sheriff's Office, approve amendment number one to the intergovernmental agreement with Oregon Department of Corrections to add $565,910 for drug-addicted persons. Approve amendment number one to the intergovernmental agreement with the City of Sublimity to provide law enforcement services for the citizens within the city limits for $170,775 through June 30th, 2019. And the last is approve amendment number one to the intergovernmental agreement with Oregon Department of Corrections to add $250,008 and extend through June 30th, 2019 for qualified offenders with custody of a minor in probation.
I'll second your motion. Any further discussion? Nope, seeing none. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. We'll move on into our action item. First item is under health that we just had a little bit of public testimony about. that we just had a little bit of public testimony about. Carrie Muller, our esteemed Director of Health and Human Services Department. Welcome, Carrie.
Good morning, Commissioners. Again, for the record, my name is Carrie Muller, and I'm the Administrator for Marion County Health and Human Services Department. Before you this morning is a, a action to consider appointing Kristen to our Health Advisory Board. As you know, over the last year, we've been very intentional, and, um, I'm very excited about the membership of the board. I wanted to appreciate Commissioner Cameron's participation. The Health Advisory Board has a critical role, uh, to, for the citizens of Marion County, and their, uh, job is to help advise the board and the Director of Health and Human Services on all things health-related. So we're, uh, we're focusing on the overall health of our community with some intentional strategies about reaching out to the community around, um, health. The Health Department, uh, Health and Human Services Department spans, um, behavioral health, including drug, alcohol, uh, mental health, developmental disabilities, and public health issues. So it's a very broad, um, based advisory board, and I'm, uh, very much appreciating Kristen's volunteering. And of course, Patrick's been our Chair for a long time, and he does a remarkable job. So thank you both. So for your consideration.
Okay. Any questions?
Don't have any questions at all. I'm so happy to have Kristen be willing to do that. I'm looking, has some experience with Polk County, currently serving there, so knows the issue. But I, he didn't say it out loud, so I'll say it for him. When Patrick mentioned her, he said she is a treasure. So that's good enough for me. So Chair Cameron, I'd make a motion that we do approve an order that appoints Kristen Coons Barber to the Health Advisory Board with a term ending June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two.
I'll second that motion. And, and in discussion, I will say this, that it's great to have somebody from Polk County because we're, we're actually in, uh, uh, with Carrie, we've been working on cross-jurisdictional and how we can help each other with, uh, efficiencies and resources. And I've been plugged in with Commissioner Pope over there to do that. And so at the advisory committee level, it would be great to have that interaction as well. So we're, we're excited about having that, that resource. Uh, any further discussion? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. We'll see you at the next Advisory Board meeting officially. Thanks, Carrie. Under, just see, under Public Works, uh, consider an adoption of an administration, administrative ordinance granting zone change comprehensive plan amendment ZCCP seventeen dash zero zero four helms. Joe, welcome.
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, Joe Fenimore. This item before you today is a request to change the Compost and Plan Designation from primary agriculture to farm timber, to change the zone from exclusive farm use to farm timber on fifty-three acres of land located in the sixteen thousand two hundred block of Emerald Green Lane, southeast Jefferson. The county hearings officer held a public hearing on November twenty-ninth, two thousand seventeen, and on March sixth, two thousand eighteen, issued a recommendation that the board approved the request. The board held a public hearing on May ninth, two thousand eighteen, and after considering all the information and evidence in the record, the board approved the request. The ordinance and findings have been prepared. A notice of adoption was given on May sixteenth. The administrative ordinance is now set for formal adoption. The board has the option of adopting the ordinance as written, direct staff prepare a modified ordinance, or choose not to adopt the ordinance at this time. Staff recommends the board adopt the attached ordinance as written. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Commissioner?
I don't. I'm just trying to remind myself all the, on this particular subject. Could you just do that for us?
Sure.
Where it is and what, in, in layman's terms.
So it's, it's a property that's, that's east of, east of Jefferson, on Jefferson-Syle Road. It has a little bit of rural residential zoning around it. But it's basically a hilltop that, that's, that's slopes, has forest that lands on it. Um, it's zoned EFU. Under the EFU zone, it's very difficult to do, to, to do any kind of developments. The farm timber zone allows us to apply the timber rules and regulations on properties that are in timber use, and therefore it might be easier for someone to get a house on the property.
All right, thank you, Joe. I recall it completely. So Chair Cameron, if I could, I'd make a motion that we do accept the recommendation from planning, and that is to adopt the attached ordinance as written.
I'll second the motion, and we did have this on, what was it, March? It was back in March, we heard this.
Actually, you heard it earlier this month, May ninth.
Oh. It feels like March. All right. So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
No.
Seeing none. All those in favor of the, uh, adoption of the ordinance, say, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Thank you.
Joe, thanks for your work. Okay, that concludes our, um, business. We have no public hearings scheduled for today. And, uh, I'll read the calendar into the record. Uh, well, right after this, as soon as we close this hearing, we're going to close this meeting, we're going to have a, a Brooks Service District Special Meeting to consider approval of a resolution setting sewer rate charges for the Brooks Sewers, Sewer District. Uh, Monday, uh, is a holiday, so the offices of Marion County are closed and observant of Memorial Day, special day. On Tuesday, at eight-thirty, the twenty-ninth, we'll do calendar review up in the Silverton Conference Room on the fifth floor, here in this building. On Tuesday, at nine o'clock, we have a management update, uh, here in this building, uh, on the fifth floor in the Silverton Conference Room. On Tuesday, the twenty-ninth, uh, at ten o'clock, we have a one-on-one meeting with Department Head Tamra Gosh, uh, in the Silverton Conference Room. On Wednesday, at nine o'clock, we'll be back here for our board session. And on Wednesday, at one-thirty, we have an executive session for bargaining pursuant to ORS one-nine-two dot six-six-zero-two-D in the Silverton Conference Room here on the fifth floor. Pretty short week next week.
Holiday helps.
Well, I'm sure you and I have other things on our calendar that we're not together on. But what do you want to say?
Well, I don't want to get into the issue again, but that was about as many people in my years that I've seen coming for a non-agenda item. So obviously, there's, um, a lot of passion on both sides of this issue. And as I said, I don't know where we'll go with it, but we'll let people know when we discuss it.
Well, what I, what I want to say is it's the, um, forget about, I mean, not forget about the issue, but the, the emotions of, um, what hit me is that the people that, um, and I'm just thinking of Memorial Day. Right?
Yep.
That's, that's the tough one. All right. Uh, so we're going to clo, we want to close this? You're done? We're good?
I can't think of anything else that I'd need to talk about, so it might be a good chance.
Well, I was up at, uh, I went to the Detroit, uh, Planning Commission, Joint Planning Commission City Council meeting last night. They applied, they approved, uh, um, a, I guess, a plot or whatever for, uh, eighteen potential houses up there in the old high school, um, field.
So how will that be serviced? Do they talk about that?
It's all septic. Well, they got city water, but it'll be septic. Is that what you mean?
Yeah.
Yeah. So it'll be septic systems, um,
One huge system?
No, no, the individual systems. It's too bad because that field would have been a good place for, um, potential sewer system up there, right? For treatment, et cetera. But, um, but it was great to see how the mayor did a great job, the, the Planning Commission, they all sat around a table. There was public testimony. And you go out to those small communities like that, and you see how, how business really gets done in small communities. It was just a real honor to be there and see.
Well, I saw the picture. There were more people there than are typically at our meetings.
Oh, my gosh. Oh, it was, it was, it was really packed, and I think pretty much everybody was supportive. There was a, there was a condition of a tree, um, actually, it was Michael Roth.
Yes.
He had a, there's a tree on the property that split, big, huge fir tree, that he, he was concerned with, that
For safety issue?
Right, safety issue, and, uh, that didn't, they didn't add a condition that had to come down, but he noted his concern in that, so the developer will have to, have to note that. But it was good to be there and see, see all that happen. You know, within an hour, they got it done. It was pretty good.
I saw. This reminds me of one other, and perhaps you'll know. I don't know whether our Danielle Gonzalez is working on it, but some type of a public gathering meeting in the canyon talking about sewer. Do you know anything about that?
So Danielle has been driving that, and, um, she's kept us out of it on purpose so that the community leaders really see themselves as the ones bringing that up. So, um, yeah, it, it, uh, and I just got, I, I just got notice that the governor wants to talk to me this afternoon, and I think it's about some of that, uh, the internet cable,
Wonderful.
Uh, what's going on up there. So, um, I'll, I'll be interested to see what Regional Solutions and Governor have in mind to help support us and what we're trying to get done up there. So, yeah, there's a lot of good things, uh, moving forward.
So you're not attending this meeting either, is that correct?
Which meeting?
The one I just, that Danielle's doing.
No, not that I know of, unless she's going to ask me, yeah.
I just want to know if I was being excluded, that's all I
No, I, I think we're all being excluded.
All right.
She's just taking the initiative to get stuff done, and it's great. Yeah. Okay, so we'll close, uh, we're going to close the board session.